Good evening and welcome to our June 3, 2025 council meeting. Can we have the roll?
Councilmember Evans.
Present.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Here.
Mayor Melman.
Here.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Present.
Councilmember Aron.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Can we stand for the flag salute, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to accept the agenda in order and content.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Point of order, didn't we have an executive session scheduled for tonight? We got an email about that earlier. We need to add that to the agenda.
That not make it, okay. Yes, we need to add that to...
It looks to be a clip from the agenda. So to amend that motion, I would like to amend it to add the executive session and request to, a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Taylor.
I'd like to remove item five and to move it into the business items.
Okay. We'll make that business item number one.
Well, number nine.
We'll make number five business item number one. Okay, no special presentations.
Point of order, we need to vote on the agenda now.
Okay. I'm not sure that we need a vote because it's automatic, but we can do that for sure. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Yes.
Councilmember Aron.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yes.
Okay, our rules, I just said that for a rule state that anybody can pull something off the agenda for discussion. So we'll be that, that'll be the first business item that we address. Again, no presentations, public comments. Okay, when I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. First, we have Brandon Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Brandon Finley and I do live in Woodinville, state limits. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and my fellow Woodinville residents. As I stand here tonight as a Woodinville resident, a husband, a father, and proud member of the LGBTQ+ community, recognizing Pride Month gives us the opportunity to reflect on the progress we've made while recommitting to the work that remains. As we gather this evening, it's important to recognize that LGBTQ+ acceptance and equality must transcend the confines of Pride Month. While the month of June provides significant opportunity to reflect, celebrate, and advocate, raising the Pride flag alone cannot fulfill our city's obligation to promote inclusivity and support. Pride Month must not be treated as an agenda item addressed once yearly, only to fade into the background when July arrives. Meaningful progress requires substantial engagement and commitment throughout the year, ensuring that the values we champion during Pride Month are embedded in our community's fabric every day. Advocating for LGBTQ+ rights is not about elevating one group over another, it's about building a community where everyone feels valued. When we embrace diversity, we strengthen our city, fostering dignity, respect, and understanding for all. Yet significant challenges remain. LGBTQ+ individuals, particularly youth and transgender people, face discrimination, violence, and barriers to basic healthcare. These realities demand our attention and action to create a city and a nation where everyone can thrive. Woodinville's vibrant diversity flourishes when inclusivity takes center stage, celebrating individuality and ensuring every voice is valued. By embedding equality into our policies, neighborhoods, and businesses, we uphold our commitment to openness and support for all. As residents, we must advocate for protective policies and amplify LGBTQ+ voices. By fostering a culture of acceptance, we ensure that Woodinville is a place where every resident feels safe, supported, and empowered to succeed. As we commemorate Pride this month, let us vow to ensure that Woodinville continues to grow as a city where every individual is valued, acknowledged, and embraced. Together, we can carry the essence of pride into our daily lives, making it a lasting commitment. Thank you and happy Pride.
Ginger Shane? Did I get that right? I'm sorry.
Ginger Chan, it's fine.
Chan.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, thank you for the chance to address you. I represent Eastside Pride and PFLAG Build the Eastside. Both of these groups seek to foster unity, celebrate diversity, build bridges across communities, as well as strengthen families of LGBTQ loved ones. You know, as I think about what I want to say today, I think I'd like to step back to a little bit of the origin story of PFLAG. An organization that was started 50 years ago by a courageous mother who chose to walk with her gay son in one of the first Pride parades, facing the slings and the arrows of those who observed and scorned her choices. And yet afterwards, the young people at the parade and the families came up to her afterwards and asked her, "How did you do it? How did you overcome your fear? How did you meet your desire to love your son and help him grow and thrive in this world?" That is the principle that Eastside Pride and PFLAG continue to practice. And as I look at the world in which we live, things are changing very quickly. It is a scary place. My parents are immigrants. They came to the U.S. hoping to find a better world for me and the family, and at the same time, they were challenged by whole new ideas and whole new cultural traditions. It frightened them, as did me, being an LGBTQ person. One of the practices of PFLAG is that we understand that a world in which we seek to find safety and comfort through exclusion, whole groups of people, a world built on that principle is one that can only get smaller. What we've learned in our organizations is that a world in which we celebrate our authenticity, where courage begets more courage, where joy is infectious, where people's creativity and inventiveness and the bright musical variety and amazing foods all come forward when a community is welcoming and inclusive, that's the world that we want to create, and it can only get bigger when we practice those principles of inclusion and compassion. To celebrate others as we would like to be celebrated, to be kind first and foremost, that is a world that is inviting and embracing. And I welcome the city's continued efforts to make that both symbolic and real in practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Schabel.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Schabel. I'm a queer Cottage Lake, Woodinville resident and Pride organizer. It's an honor to stand here tonight as we raise the Pride flag, a symbol of resilience, belonging, and solidarity. But for many of us, this moment carries a deeper meaning rooted in Woodinville's recent history. In 2020, I helped author the city's first ever Pride proclamation. That came after a difficult moment for our community. During Pride Month, after the Orlando massacre in 2016, someone added a rainbow decoration to the fish statue, following a longstanding tradition of decorating the statue for celebrations and events. But this time, when a handful of complaints came in, which was not unusual for other decorations, those included homophobic remarks. And instead of affirming the queer community, the city responded by banning all future decorations as criminal vandalism. The justification was that if a rainbow was allowed and it was considered inherently political, they'd have to allow other political things like MAGA signs. So rather than doing anything to address the harm, they banned the activity. Outside of one exception that was made by the prior mayor to decorate it in American flags for the Fourth of July during Pride Month, after refusing to implement an equitable selection process that we proposed. But I digress. In response, our community did come together. People shared stories of homophobia, transphobia, racism, xenophobia, and other discrimination experienced right here in Woodinville. So we listened, we organized, and with the support from groups like Clotopians for Peace, who donated the very first Pride flag that was risen, we made our presence and our values known. Since then, we've made some progress, like establishing our own Woodinville Pride event. And tonight, we'll raise an updated Pride flag that's been donated by Holly. One that rightfully represents our community, including Black, Brown, transgender, and intersex people, whose voice must be centered in our fight for equity. But let's be clear, while the flag is powerful, symbolism alone is not enough. As federal protections are being attacked and anti-queer rhetoric grows louder, local governments like ours must lead with action. Woodinville must strengthen nondiscrimination protections, provide affirming spaces, and ensure that everyone feels safe, seen, and supported. So those who raised the flag, please let it be more than a celebration. Let it be a promise that we will continue the work of justice and that the queer community in Woodinville belongs, is seen, and is advocated for by this council. And if you're here in support of Pride, whether or not you're going to speak tonight, can you please stand for a moment and be acknowledged? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Holly Muncho.
Hello, my name is Holly Muncho. I'm a resident of Woodinville City, and I'm happy tonight to donate this updated Pride flag to the city for us to raise this year. I didn't quite know what to say, but for me, this is really important because Pride symbolizes the freedom to pursue happiness and love for everybody. Whether that's love for yourself and your own identity, free from judgment, or whether that's to love whoever you should love. And so I'm hoping that this will help our community continue to spread happiness and love.
Thank you. That's everybody that signed up. Anybody else wish to speak before we get to our first business item? Okay, so that brings us to our first, we have somebody. Yes.
Sorry, I'm Linda Schramm. I signed up kind of late. I'm from unincorporated Woodinville. And I agree with everybody, these meetings need to be safe. Everybody needs to feel safe. Everybody needs to be treated equally. I just have, I know you guys can't address us, but I, I'm looking at all of our officers up there, our council people, and asking you, I don't feel as if I had an equal opportunity tonight. The flag's already been raised. I thought tonight's meeting was to decide that. I'm surprised that the leadership somehow skipped a step, that we didn't get our input yet. I think everyone's kind of scared, both sides. And I think the crack when you do this is to treat it fairly, equally. Everyone gets a chance to say something. So I'd like everybody in the room to stand up. I'm not going to ask you to. I'd like everybody to be heard tonight before the decision is made. Thank you.
Ms. Feely, I do have a question for you, if you're willing to answer. You mentioned that you felt fear. I am curious, what is it that you are afraid of?
I'm sorry, are you addressing me?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, chair.
Yeah, I'm really trying to hear you, and you mentioned that you felt fear.
I don't feel fear. I don't feel fear. I feel I've been treated unequally, not in a safe manner. I'm a parliamentarian, and I know what a chair should be doing, and I know when things are on the agenda, that how they should be handled. I feel it didn't get handled right here.
Okay.
There's already been an action done that's been not voted on, so perhaps next year handle it differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our first business item, and it's Pride Month proclamation.
Point of order, we have to do consent calendar approval.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
As amended.
Oh, as amended, sorry.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed to six and seven, but otherwise I'm okay with the rest of it.
So you're in agreement with the consent?
Line item.
You don't get a line item vetoed.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, could you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, I will. The vote is to accept the consent as amended. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Yes.
Councilmember Aron.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one. Okay, first business item, Pride Month proclamation. Councilmember Taylor, you asked to have this. You have the floor.
All right. All right. Councilmembers, members of the public, I want to be clear and direct in my opposition to the proposal to raise the Pride flag over City Hall. My objection is not rooted in personal animus, but in principled belief in the role of government, the symbolism of our institutions, and the importance of neutrality in civic representation. I think we can agree to that. City Hall is the seat of our local government. It serves all citizens equally and must remain a neutral institution that does not promote specific social or political causes. The American flag and the state flag are the only appropriate flags to fly above City Hall. These flags represent all of us. Regardless of our personal beliefs or identities, they symbolize unity, shared values, and allegiance to our constitutional system, not individual causes or movements. Raising the Pride flag or any flag representing a particular group or ideology turns a space meant for civic unity into a platform for political expression. This is not appropriate for a government building. It sends the message, whether intended or not, that the city government is endorsing one viewpoint over others, and that is not the role of public institutions. Furthermore, approving one flag opens the door to endless streams of requests from other groups, each of their own claims to visibility or recognition. If we approve this, we will be asked to approve others. Where does it stop? Once we deviate from the principle of neutrality, we risk undermining the very purpose of our public symbols and the credibility of the institutions we represent, all of us here. This is not about denying anyone's right to express themselves. Individuals and private organizations are free to fly any flag they wish on their own property, but government property is different. It must remain impartial and focused on serving public as a whole. I oppose the politicization of our civic spaces and oppose raising the Pride flag over City Hall. I believe doing so would set a precedent that erodes the unity and neutrality that government institutions must maintain. Thank you.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
I respectfully disagree with Councilmember Taylor. I am proud that the riots on June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn gave rise to the modern gay rights movement. I am proud that the first gay rights parades were held in major cities starting the next year in 1970. I am proud that in 1987 investigative journalist Randy Schultz wrote and the band played on to document the political apathy to the AIDS epidemic because the afflicted had happened to be gay. I am proud that in 2004, same-sex marriage was legalized in Massachusetts, starting a nationwide expansion, which includes our great state of Washington. I am proud that in 2012, I was a bridesmaid in the wedding of my son's incredible godmothers. I am proud that in 2025, my young nieces feel safe to come out as openly gay and non-binary, and that they are supported by everyone in my extended family. I am proud once again to raise the Pride flag above Woodinville. I'm proud that Pride will be celebrated in Gateway Park on June 14, and I am proud to welcome Pride to Woodinville now and in the future.
Any other? Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Pride is not about special treatment. It's about making space where there used to be enforced silence, shame, and violence. Why celebrate Pride? Because for generations, 2S LGBTQ+ people were forced to hide who they were. And those who didn't hide well enough were criminalized and punished for it. Pride isn't about elevating one group above another. It's about affirming a group that has historically and recently been denied basic human rights of dignity, safety, and belonging. And honestly, this is not a zero-sum game. We should absolutely celebrate things like AAPI Heritage Month, Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and others as well. This is what makes community. Community is not about homogeneity. It's not about worshiping one single flag. It's about making space for what brings us together and what makes us unique. It's recognizing one group's contributions. It's, it's not that recognizing one group's contributions or struggles takes away anything from anybody else. It makes our community stronger, more informed, more connected, and more honest about our shared history and our community and our shared story. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I didn't prepare a long speech. I will be very brief, and that is, this flag also represents inclusion for all. That is what the new changes are about, whether it comes down to race, gender, or sexual orientation. Everyone should be respected regardless of who you love, regardless of what your preference is. You should be included within this government and the things that we do. Over the last four years, we've flown this flag, and I have seen no deterioration in what happens in this council. As a matter of fact, looking at the people who are in this galley today, I would say that it has increased our level of inclusion. And the people that are here are here to celebrate that inclusion, and I appreciate you being here. One large problem that we're seeing from council members, like the one on the end of the bench, and seeing decay nationally, is the idea that respecting others deters from a respect from all. But my observation is my love of other people does not detract from you. It's not pie. So please, respect others, be inclusive, and thank you for being here. Everyone deserves to be loved.
Councilmember Aron.
Thank you. I'm also very short in the prepared speech department, but I have to say that the city of Woodinville has always affirmed the importance of diversity in our community, culturally, ethnically, racially, and sexual orientation and gender identities. This is a policy of our city which we have affirmed multiple times, and this proclamation is yet another way of affirming that stance here in our city. The raising of the flag is something that doesn't happen for every group, but that is often because other groups are not, historically, they have not suffered the level of exclusion and the level of harassment that the LGBTQIA+ community has. Oftentimes, when we think about equity, it's not leveling the playing field. That doesn't get you there. It's elevating those who have been suppressed for so long. And that is what raising the Pride flag and this proclamation means to me here in the city of Woodinville.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. Also no prepared speech today, but I heard the role of local government brought up. And to me, the role of the local government is to ensure that everyone in our community feels safe and welcome. And when civil rights and individual rights are being attacked all around our country right now, it's more important than ever to show, again, this is not enough, but showing this flag is a symbol that Woodinville here, we see our residents, and we're here to protect people and be there for them through this fight as individual rights are being taken. And we, we are here to make sure this community remains inclusive and a community for everyone here. So I think raising this flag is more than just the flag, and we need to take additional steps as well. But the symbolism of this is shows that we're here to support everyone. And again, while rights are being attacked around the country, us as a city needs to step up and be there for our community in times like this. So thank you.
Anybody else?
So not everybody probably has seen our proclamation, and I want to, I'm not going to read it. It's 10 points, so it's rather long. So I want to touch on a couple of things that are, are, stand out to me. So whereas LGBTQI, 2S+, Americans are deserving the same dignity, respect, justice, and rights afforded to all citizens, a principle bolstered by the Washington State law against discrimination as amended in 2006, the 2012 Washington ESSB 6239 legislation to legalize same-sex marriage, and landmark 2015 decision of the U.S. Supreme Court guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states. Whereas, another point is whereas the fight for equality and dignity for all individuals under the law continues, as evidenced by nationwide attacks and threats against the rights of various communities, the city of Woodinville remains, this is the third point that I'm going to mention, and there's again 10. The city of Woodinville remains committed to delivering inclusive and responsive services to all members of the community and will not tolerate discrimination, harassment, or any behavior that creates fear, isolation, or intimidation. So I'm in favor of raising the Pride flag. I believe that we're honoring a community that has traditionally been persecuted. I witnessed it myself, growing up in my neighborhood as a child. It had a profound effect on me. on me growing up. I don't like bullies, and I will witness that firsthand, and I think this is more than appropriate for the city of Woodinville to do, and as is mentioned by Councilmember Taylor, the Washington State law has addressed this, so the government has weighed in on this issue. We are local government, and I believe that this is more than appropriate, and I support it 100%.
Any further commentations, comments? Councilmember Best Campbell.
I want to make the motion that the mayor sign the 2025 Pride Month proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Best Campbell, you have the floor.
This is a no-brainer. This isn't even a government issue. This is a people issue, so yes, we're sitting in a government building, but this is people, this is human, and a flag is truly the least we could do. There needs to be more, and Pride Month extends beyond June. It's about supporting people when no one is looking, so I think that that is something that we all should consider is support throughout the year and not just at a time when we can raise a flag and pat ourselves on the back.
Any more discussion? Councilmember Taylor.
I'd like to have a quick agenda. In the month of July, I would like to raise the Star David flag for Israel, considering all the assault that they've encountered.
Do you have a second? Seeing none, motion fails. Any further discussion?
Wow.
Well, that answered my question. I hesitate because this isn't generally what I like to do, but Councilmember Taylor, you know, he had a speech himself, sure is well-prepared, but the body of evidence with Councilmember Taylor is stark and unprofessional and discriminatory and bullying. There's long held, many years of this. I'm going to read a couple of them. It's about pushing a simple sexual abomination to 95% of families in this town. Speaking of going to a church, I go to one where unrepentant sinners are told they go to hell without being born again. You may trample the rights of 95% of your neighbors in the community and get some sympathizer degree to hoist the flag.
Point of order. You cannot use the podium to attack a council member.
You're, these are your words?
Point of order.
Your, it's not well-recognized.
Robert's Rules, you don't talk to...
That is incorrect.
Who's a parliamentarian?
You may trample the rights of 95% of your neighbors in the community and get some sympathizer degree to hoist the flag, but as trampling the rights of 95% of your neighbors, you find it offensive to highlight aberrant sexual practices and should be kept private. Repent fast. Hope you attend Alpha Class at nearby church. Not familiar with that, but... I like to believe that there are six others serving on council that are utterly unfit that you support, so the feeling is mutual. This is not a respectful path to go, and I hesitate to bring this up, but these are words that are spread into our community and are inappropriate, and I'm pushing back on them very vigorously so that the canned written speech is not exactly what is being pushed. So I support this amendment. Any further discussion? If you haven't spoken twice? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Rendell?
Thousand times yes.
Motion carries, 6-1. Thank you. Now I'd like to, I'd like to adjourn to the flag. We can raise the pride flag, so please join me out to the flag and the courtyard.
Okay, let's, thank you. Let's resume our meeting. That brings us to our next business item, and if I put my eyes back on, I can tell you what it is. It's business item approval of resolution number 662, revising investment policies. Mr. Fritz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I have a presentation for you this evening. We're going to take a look at our investment policy. It's been a couple of years since councils had a touch on this document. We're also going to share with you some strategy review that's done annually with our investment advisors and talk a little bit about governance and reporting this evening. To start that off, though, I'd like to do an introduction. We contract with a firm called Government Portfolio Advisors, and our principal or primary contact with that firm is Deanne Woodring. She's a certified financial advisor and the president of the firm. She's on the call with us this evening, and I would invite Deanne to go ahead and share with the council a little bit about the firm.
Thank you, Blaine, and good evening, and good to see all of you. So Government Portfolio Advisors is a fiduciary investment advisor located in Portland, Oregon. Our primary focus is working with local governments and on their investment program. We're proud to have Woodinville as one of our earlier clients. We currently manage $25 billion in assets for local governments. This includes the city of Woodinville, city of Seattle, city of Tacoma, Sound Transit, city of Bremerton, many, many clients in the state of Washington, as well as in the state of Oregon and these other nine states. So our main goal is to support you in what you need and what's happening, and we work very closely with both Blaine and Brandon on what's happening there at the city, your cash flow needs, and we're very focused on looking at, it's been, as you've all seen in the news, it's been a very interesting market over the last year, and I'm really proud of how your portfolio is sitting, going through that. So we'll discuss a little bit of that as Blaine presents further, and I can take any questions.
Okay, so just a quick overview of the objectives this evening. I want to review governance and the reporting that we provide to the council as they perform the role of that governance over our finances. Then we'll go into the guideline portfolio strategy document, which is an annual review provided by GPA each year, and then we'll look at the investment policy recommendations. So the city council has a fiduciary role as the final decision-makers for the city in the policy-setting capacity, and so I want to do a brief overview for the council and constituents as to what we provide to you as you make your decisions over the course of a biennium. And that starts with the budget. It starts early September before the biennium begins, where we review revenue projections with council, then we talk about expenditure projections, and come up with a recommended appropriations, which the council establishes to guide the city. And so through, from September through December is a planning, a financial planning exercise that we go through every two years with the council. And then on a monthly basis, well, actually on a council meeting basis, you receive in your packet as part of your consent agenda, the payroll certification that shows you how much has gone out in payroll each meeting, or over, excuse me, out of each payroll period, which is once, well, we get paid twice a month, so two times each month. And we also provide a report that shows you how that's allocated out to the different funds. On that first column in the little image there would be that data. We also provide on a per-meeting basis a detailed report on every expenditure that the city pays out, whether it's a wire, or a check, or an ACH transfer. This report provides you with a short description of the expenditure, the total amount of the expenditure. It gives you the account code it's coded to, the check number if you ever wanted to reference it, and the intent behind this report is if, so the council can review the expenditures going out, and if they ever have a question about who's being paid for what, they can choose to ask me through via email, or calling me up, or stopping by the office, or even during a council meeting, asking if we're to be pulled off consent agenda and getting more details on that expenditure. And then there's the monthly treasures report. We, this report always has a one-month lag in data, and that's because it takes about three to four weeks to reconcile the prior month, because we have to wait at least 10 days to get information from King County to do that reconciliation. But this report is got a significant amount of high-level, very important detail. It shows you revenue, not only actual revenue coming in, but how it compares to the prior years or the prior biennium's trends. It shows you expenditures in the same way. It provides you a budget to actual comparison, and it displays this information both graphically and table form and with a narrative. In addition, this report provides the council with our investments in detail and gives you an idea of the return that we're getting on those investments. And then there's the annual report. This annual financial report is produced every year. In fact, it's going to be released to the council here in the next couple of days. It's unaudited until the auditors come in about six to nine months later. When they do their work, they involve you in the report at that point in time, too, where they ask for any feedback that they may need to consider as they perform their audit, and then they invite you to be there when they present their findings from the audit. And then finally, the touches the council has when it comes to setting policy. All of our financial policies are approved by council. They're not approved by management. So we have purchasing policies, fixed asset policies, and investment policies, just to name a few, the investment policies we're going to be looking at tonight. So those are all of the things that we provide to the council to help you make good financial decisions, and I thought that with this particular presentation would be a good opportunity to highlight those, not only for, of course, the council not only for, of course, the council members, but for constituents, because all of these documents are, um, published and available to them as part of the meeting packets and whatnot. So, um, the, uh, strategy document is prepared annually by GPA and presented to your finance committee, which consists of me and the city manager. We review this document, um, the city manager, myself, and the accounting supervisor reviews this document in a meeting with government portfolio advisors. And the review looks at the over, total portfolio and compliance with policy. It, um, it, the conversation is around, um, how we can modify our strategy given the current market and, um, stay within the parameters of our existing financial policy. It, um, it looks at our liquidity needs and, uh, comes out with an, uh, GPA provides us an initial recommendation. Oftentimes, recommending that we actually put more into long-term investments. And move out, uh, less of our money, keeping less of our money in our liquid investments. And that recommendation is then modified when we talk about what our needs are over the next year or two years. The, the recommendations that they provide also include fund allocation. That helps to, uh, address, uh, risk associated with the lack of diversification and reduce that risk. Also maximizing our return in the current environment. And then ratios for long versus short-term investment and duration strategies, all addressing our liquidity risk and maximizing our returns. So in the review this year, um, they, the overall recommendation is to maintain our current liquidity, which is around 30% of our total portfolios and liquid investments, which means that we're keeping about 25 million liquid. But that's appropriate, given the fact that we've got some major construction projects going on, um, including the, um, uh, you know, the, hopefully commencing the roundabout, 133rd grid road extension project, um, this summer, the design work that's going on the rail corridor, and the trestle project work that's, um, ongoing, all of which, um, are significant budgeted items and will need, um, cash flow to progress on. So the recommend, the overall recommendation is to keep that liquid balance fairly high, but potentially spend it down over the next couple of years. And, um, uh, also to take a look at corporate allocation and see if we can build that part of our portfolio up a little bit as we reinvest long-term investments, as they mature. So the core strategy of zero to five years treasury benchmark is to hold steady there. The asset allocation targets down below. That recommendation is to modify slightly from last year. We had, uh, super nationals at 5% and US agencies at, uh, 55%. So it recommends increasing the super nationals to 10%, and US agencies to 50. And then there's also a recommendation with our investment policy, which I'm gonna go into next. So the first recommendation on, uh, the investment policy is really housekeeping in nature. In the section under authorized financial dealers, banking institutions, there's a section that calls out the Washington State Finance Directors Public Deposit Protection Commission. It's really the Washington State Treasurers Public Deposit, uh, Protection Commission, so we just made a correction there. And then the more significant, um, uh, revision is to modify the weighted average maturity limit that's currently in the investment policy. It's currently set at two, and we're, uh, recommending that it gets changed to 2.5. And really, the impetus behind this recommendation is twofold. One, it's in alignment with our zero-to-five-year investment strategy. So it, um, provides, uh, alignment there, but it also provides us with a little bit of flexibility as we move into the future here. Right now, the city's weighted average maturity is 1.4, uh, excuse me, 1.5, four years. But as we spin down our liquidity balance and maintain our long-term core investment balance, that ratio is gonna change to, uh, it's gonna go up. And, and if it were to reach two by policy, um, I would have to liquidate an investment, even if it means taking the loss, um, uh, to make sure that our liquidity balance, uh, brings our weighted average maturity in line with policy. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility as we spin down our liquidity balance for these larger projects. But it does not increase significant risk. We've always maintained a much higher liquidity balance than what our cash flow shows that we need. And I'm not concerned about liquidity risk in that process. And that's all I have for you this evening. Deanne and I are available, uh, to answer any questions the council may have.
Councilmember Best Kemble.
Um, so on the summary action items, you have the $14 million for the trestle. Where is the money, um, set aside for, um, land acquisition particularly? I was thinking for the rec center. Do we have that, um, figured into some of the liquidity needs that you're showing us right now?
Yes, it's figured into those liquidity needs, and that money is budgeted to come out of the general fund reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Evans.
So this extra six months is gonna give you the flexibility that you feel like you need so you wouldn't be forced to sell at a loss. It just seems like moving it by half a year is not significant, but maybe I'm missing something?
Well, uh, our investment, um, our long-term investment is limited to five years. And, um, I, uh, we can't actually exceed that by state law.
Right.
So when you average it out, it actually works out pretty good. I think that, I think that, um, I would be surprised if we reached that limit.
Okay, so in, in the past, it was set at two. Was it primarily because we do biannual planning? Or was there some other reason?
I think it's, and, um, and Deanne can weigh in on this, too, but I think it may be an artifact of when we first started our, uh, investment policy. We were at a zero to three year, um, initially, and we would just maybe just missed increasing that then.
Okay, so by going to 2.5, we're basically just splitting the difference between zero and the maximum of five years and just giving you that flexibility.
That's right.
Thank you.
And that's the correct, uh, Blaine. That, uh, we didn't move, when we moved our strategy longer, we didn't move that part. And we still won't probably push it up, but it just gives that flexibility. So we don't, if you had that 14 million pullout of your liquidity, it would push us over. So that's just what we're trying to manage. We don't wanna change the strategy because of that.
Any questions?
I move to approve resolution number six, twenty-two, a resolution of the Woodinville City Council adopting investment policy and superseding resolution number six, twenty-two.
Point of order real quick. Is it six, sixty-two or six, twenty-two?
Great, great catch, yeah.
The new resolution is six, sixty-two. The one that it's superseding is six, twenty-two.
Okay, so I think you said it when you made the motion. I think you said the first one is six, twenty-two. At least that's what I heard.
Okay, uh, I'll remake the motion or amend. I approve resolution number six, sixty-two, a resolution of the Woodinville City Council adopting investment policy and superseding resolution number six, twenty-two, second.
A motion, second. Deputy Mayor Randall, you have the floor.
Uh, this seems fairly straightforward. I'm more curious about the state law and why some of those things are in place, but that's something I can take up with Mr. Fritz, uh, at another time.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I, a couple of things. I, I wanna extend kudos, uh, to, uh, staff, our investment advisor and council. Uh, five, if, we go back to five, twenty-three, um, we changed, uh, maturity, uh, levels and we, we invested money. And I think it was within days or weeks of, uh, a series of Fed rate cuts. So we, we almost pinpointed, uh, the high interest rates in five, on five, twenty-three. It was real close, within days, again, days or weeks, I can't remember. So kudos, kudos to that. Um, that, uh, was a brilliant move. I, uh, I'd like to say it was, it was, uh, well thought, thought out. I don't know if that was the case, but it, it actually worked out really well. Has, has, I don't know who wants to address it, but has the investment, uh, decisions or, or our decisions or the safety or anything of what we're venturing into, has the uncertainty with, uh, interest rates or tariffs or, uh, uh, the Moody's rate cut, our, our debt, uh, US got a Moody's rate cut, has that played a role in anything that we're doing as far as being, balancing what we're investing in differently or looking at it any differently than we did, say, two years ago?
Deanne, you, Deanne, you wanna take that?
I can take that. And Mayor, I'm really glad you noticed that, because you were exactly right. You guys were the, the top where we did that swap. And what we did, and Blaine, Blaine recognized this and said, boy, we have these securities that we have at a really low yield when rates were a lot lower. And so we brought that forward to you to take advantage of the much higher rate and adjust the portfolio structure and pretty much hit the high in the rates. So it's not our job to hit the rights and predict, is to work the portfolio, and that's what we did. And you, with your, uh, support on that, to do that trade. So basically, what you did is you allowed us to anchor down and lock in higher yields in the investment portfolio. For going forward, you will capture higher real yields, and that trade worked out very well. There's a lot of news on the markets. I feel, everybody asks me, am I sleeping at night? I'm sleeping really good. We are working in the five-year and shorter sector of the market. Interest rates are still positioned to go down. So what we did in those trades is we locked in and anchored the portfolio as much as we can. So we expect yields to come down in the portfolio, but not as fast and accelerated rate because of that restructure. Surprisingly, the markets, while the news is out there that they're kinda crazy, on the bond side, were really stable. We're sitting on the two-year note between a 3.80 and a 4%. That's down about, uh, 1% from, uh, two years ago. So, uh, the strategy has not changed. We're holding discipline. We're holding structure and just being very tactical and agile for those position changes, which, uh, you guys are being reported on. So, uh, we're, we're, um, nothing's changing on the structure. And that's what you want. You don't want to have a, a strategy that's changing and emotional within these type of markets.
Thank you. Uh, one other question, uh, wasn't sure. So we, we identified 30% liquidity, and I believe that's 25 million is what we're targeting. And then there was a maximum of 35 million. Can you, can you explain, can you explain how that works if we got to 36 million? What, what, when you say maximum, how does, what does that actually mean?
Well, um, it's, it's a strategy guideline document. It's not a policy. So we would, uh, evaluate if we go outside of parameters and decide what the best strategy is at that point. But if we, if we were to increase to 35 million in liquidity, I'm certain that GPA would be, uh, knocking on my door saying, we have some opportunities here and, um, would be asking me to consider making some investments. So, um, but the, the, the strategy guideline document does not lock us in to those limits.
So this is kind of a placeholder. If it starts approaching that for whatever reason, then we start reevaluating our, or what we're doing. Because it, you know, the state auditor said it, um, you know, there is a balance between keeping, uh, sufficient reserves and also spending on city services. So is that kinda talking to, we're reaching a reserve level where we need to start talking about either how to invest that better, or if, if there are any other projects that, that the city can do with that extra? Is that, is that a fair way to characterize that?
Yeah, I think that's a policy decision, though. And, uh, you know, that's, and I think that the city currently has significant plans on how to take the money that we have, um, we have built up over the years and, uh, convert that into services to the citizens, whether it's an expanded roadway system, a 2.2, um, mile-long trail system, or what have you. So, um, I'm not concerned about the, uh, amount of reserves that we have. I think that the city's put a lot of deliberative, um, consideration into how to use its money. And so it's just making that, it's just taking the time and, uh, spent, taking the time to do it right and get the public input that, uh, requires it to sit a little bit.
Thank you. I, and I just, again, I just think it was phenomenal that we hit that point right at the peak. So, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Can all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none, most carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Business item, uh, business item number 10, approval of professional services agreement with forum placemaking for 68,500 to support implementation of inclusionary zoning for the East Rail Mixed Use Zone. Mr. Grunberg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is kinda looking at the next step in implementing a council priority regarding both our affordable housing and East Road Mixed Use Zone. So real quick, some background, uh, the 2024, 2044 Conference of Plan included policies for implementing inclusionary zoning, uh, to support affordable housing here in Woodinville. Couple meetings back, ordinance number seven, eighty-six was adopted for interim inclusionary zoning, um, in the CBD zone. So we currently do have regulations on the book that has it mandated in CBD zone for a certain amount of, um, affordable units to be included with new projects. But also as part of this, as council's thinking about how to move forward with, um, implementing the rest of this policy, um, there was a, um, uh, request to conduct an economic impact analysis, um, uh, to be determined different policy approaches. So we have an idea of what, um, uh, different policies might produce for inclusionary zoning around the city. And then the other thing was the 2024, 2044 Conference of Plan included converting much of the general business zone to the East Rail Mixed Use Zone. And so we've already started doing some planning efforts in this. There was a creative district plan. There was included recommendations for the EMU. And then also, uh, one of the things that was, um, wanting to be taken a look at is the council's looked at various features they'd like to potentially see, um, incorporated into the EMU, studying the feasibility of some of those, um, features. So we went out and took a look to see if we could get some help in, uh, potentially facilitating and getting feedback and putting those studies and stuff together. So we came upon forum placemaking. Uh, Brian Vennerman is the principal, and he has previously worked here in the city of Woodinville on the civic campus project. So I just took a couple of the, um, um, parts, bullet points that they have on their website as to some of the things that they're doing. I'm not gonna go through all these bullets, statements, but you're more than welcome if you wanna take a look. There's also their website, but a lot of these really do line up really well with what, um, the city is looking to try to do with both the inclusionary zoning study as well as some of the things that we're trying to look to do with the, um, EMU zoning. So the agreement has a not-to-exceed budget of $68,000. This is something that actually will have to get added, because it wasn't currently budgeted for. So we'll have to add that, um, as an amendment to the budget later in the year. The duration of this is through March 31st, 2026. The goal is to try to potentially try to complete this before the end of this year, but we wanted to put a little bit more time just in case there's some spillover, so that's why the March 31st. And if by chance we need to go even further with it, uh, that, we can always do amendments down the road on that. The scope of work includes evaluating and analysis of over several iterations, the financial feasibility of various policies, um, combinations for implementing our inclusionary zoning. And this will include discussions with the city council and staff to clarify city's goals as well as providing feedback on drafting the analysis and recommendations. So you will give us the feedback as to what's going to be the basis of the analysis and recommendations that we then bring back to you for potential, uh, future actions. And then the other, that's, so that's one part of the scope of work. The other part of the scope of work separately will be facilitating the vision of the future of the EMU to include a variety of desirable features, including affordable housing, affordable commercial space, spaces tailored to creative artists and users, and an evaluation of the financial feasibility of some of these features, uh, because we wanna make sure that these things are actually, some of these ideas that we're talking about will actually work. And so that will also be part of what's being facilitated and evaluated. From all of this, then, staff will get the feedback from the council and will develop code amendments for the city council to consider, um, based on the outcome of this process. And then those code amendments will go through their normal planning commission and then, um, back to city council for final action. back to city council for final action. So after completing the agreement part of this, the next step of this will be, after that, we'll be finishing, putting together a work plan and scheduling a first meeting, which we'll work with the city manager to coordinate with the council on scheduling that. Probably not in too distant future because we want to get started on this fairly soon. So that completes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. There is a recommended motion that's both in your packet and up there on the screen.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Yesterday, Councilmember Arnt and I had a chance to go to an Imagine Housing slash Arch slash Faith Community workshop on affordable housing. And some of the stats that I learned were really, really kind of shocking, that even with donated land, fifty percent AMI is really tough to achieve. So I want to make sure that as we approve this, that we're going to be bringing those people in who've been doing this work on the streets. Literally, one of the developments that we heard about, they had been working on making it pencil out for thirty years. And we're talking land that that faith-based organization has owned for decades. And so I just want to make sure that we are taking into account real examples, real projects, and that we're tapping into, that through this agreement, that we're going to be bringing in people who are actually making these projects happen and who have walked down these roads.
Yeah, so the scope of work does include actually that kind of outreach. It's not just facilitating with the city council. It is also actually contacting people that are experienced, both on the financial and other sides of this, and incorporating their feedback into coming up with recommendations for the city council.
And is there any sort of, I don't know, hands-on workshop? Or is there any sort of thing that people could go through to understand why affordable housing is challenging and why you can't just jam certain percentages down just because it sounds good?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the basis of why we want to do the study. So all of that kind of is underlying fundamental to the reason for doing these studies.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Arnt.
Thank you. I'm really excited to get this contract underway. I know inclusionary zoning is something that I have been excited and pushing the council forward on for years. And I love, as Councilmember Evans highlighted, the numbers are shocking. And so we need to have the data and the deep dive analysis to really figure out what works. My questions are about the timeline on this. So this contract goes through March. We passed our temporary inclusionary zoning, which was a six-month ordinance. So is, are we thinking that we would be able to have a working ordinance ready to go before the end of that six months? And then the rest of the time is for additional work or finishing things up? Or do we think that we're going to go all the way into March before we can have this finished ordinance ready before the council?
I'm not sure if we'll necessarily, those are great questions, by the way. I'm not sure if we'll necessarily go into March or not. A lot of that will depend on how these facilitation and all the background and all the conversations that take place, how long those might take over the course over the next couple of months. Regarding the interim ordinance, I mean, I think the chances are highly likely that we will not have permanent regulations in place before that expires. And what will happen if that is the case, we'll be bringing back to renew that ordinance, because you can extend out an interim. It's six months right now, but it can be extended out another six months if we need to keep that in place until permanent regulations have been developed and adopted by the city council.
Thank you. And while I don't want to cut corners on this work, because the numbers change things considerably, but I would advocate for pushing this forward as quickly as we can because I don't think extending that temporary ordinance further than we need to is really going to do us any favors in the long term.
Councilmember Best Kemble.
Kenmore shocked their planning commission by defying their suggestions in terms of affordability percentages. And their meeting hasn't come online yet. I haven't been able to watch it to see what information they used from planning commission and what changed their mind to, I think they had a fifty percent requirement. I'd like to see what information they used, if we could find a way to steal it, look at it, and see what their logic is. They obviously deliberated on it, but I haven't seen the video, so I don't know what they've deliberated on. But it would be, I think, instructive to see what data they're using versus what data we get, and just do a comparative analysis and say, I mean, it was a huge difference between what their planning commission suggested and what the council approved. So I'd just like to see a little bit more information about how that happened, and if it was data-based on a consultant that they used, or if it was just a personal decision and a let's try something lower. I'd like to see what that was.
The great thing about government is that we can kind of basically steal from each other. So we'll take a look at that and see what information, whether that was just a policy decision, whether they had any studies that informed any of that.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? So can you go back a slide, please? So in there caught my attention. So we're talking about affordable housing, affordable commercial space, and artists, creative artists' spaces, and then evaluation, the financial feasibility, including viability of private sector developers. Which, you know, when we're talking to private developers here, you, it's a, it's a, it's a negotiation. And you get to talk about needs that the city has, or state mandates that we're required to do, or local needs in a local way. So I'm glad that we're looking at the economics of it. One thing that's, I would like to emphasize, we need to, we talk a lot about affordable housing, which we should, but we don't talk enough about affordable commercial. Because we get, in Woodinville, we tend to get these new developments. We tend to get a lot of wine tasting and restaurants, which is great. People enjoy that, but we're not getting some of the sole proprietor smaller shops and things. So is that, you know, a lot of people that I talk to, they want, you know, some boutiques to look at or shop through, or, you know, amenities like that. And I don't know how we do that on, on the open market, the private market. Is there a way of encouraging that? We were recently successful in encouraging Trader Joe's, which the public wants to come here. But is there a way of encouraging other private businesses that maybe, and we're not going to do a market analysis, but there is an economic benefit to having a diversity to our economy and diversity of services to the residents that we represent.
Yeah, so I think you're touching on two subject items. One of those is just general economic development, which is promoting businesses of all types, how to get those here into the city. And then the other one, which is something council's talked about in previous meetings, is this thing about affordable commercial, and there could be some connections to those. What I would note for the affordable commercial, at least so far, this is going to be kind of a new frontier, because unlike affordable housing, there really isn't much out there. And there are definitely different factors into affordable commercial and how to make some of that work. So that is part of the reason we brought the consultant on, so we can talk with council more to get more of your thoughts on this, and then also to kind of dive into this kind of new frontier to figure out what might be feasible to promote more affordable, whether it's something that can be done through zoning, whether it will require programs by the city. I mean, we'll take a look at the whole thing on that and how to potentially try to create that.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, just building on that, because I know a lot of this affordability of stuff that I've been talking about with the Chamber of Commerce as I've been working with them. But I would like to see if we could get the Lake City Collective in here. They work through the Chamber of Commerce, but they specifically focus on diverse businesses and the needs that they have. And I know a lot of times they are looking for those spaces. And so they've seen a wide variety of affordable commercial around the north and east side of Puget Sound. And so it would be great if we could have them at least be interviewed or have a voice in this.
Any more discussion, questions? Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up because I'm reading through it. I don't see it firmly called out in what the scope of work includes. But when we talk about having things pencil out, what comes up often is how do we get public financing for some of these projects that we might want? I want to make sure that as part of this, that's actually part of what we'll be discussing.
Yeah, so one of the things that I see it looked at on whether it's the commercial or the housing side of things is, because, you know, just adopting policies doesn't mean that it'll happen. It has to actually work out by whoever's going to be paying for this stuff. So whether it's the private sector, you're looking to do this, or whether you're looking at partnerships and stuff, all of those things have to be considered as, and will be considered as part of this in, as potential ways of promoting affordable housing or affordable commercial spaces. Particularly in the case of the affordable commercial spaces, because that one's a lot, going to be a lot tougher nut to crack if you're expecting the market to produce it. That probably will require intervention with public funding and stuff like that potentially. But that's what we'll look at to see to what extent the market can support, to what extent it will require other sources to try to help promote it.
All right, thanks. Any more discussion? Seeing none.
I move to approve the professional service agreement with forum place making for professional services to support implementing inclusionary zoning and the East Rail mixed-use zone in the amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars substantially in the form presented, and authorize the city manager to take other actions as necessary to implement this agreement.
Second.
Motion second. Deputy Mayor Randolph, you have the floor.
Everybody knows and has brought up that we are in a housing crisis. We are hoping that inclusionary zoning is a process that we can go through to actually help us remedy some of that problem. So we're looking to get to this quickly and get a deep understanding of what it means to make the numbers fit or to break even for some of these developers. In that, I'm hoping what we can also do is understand what it takes to get public, public funding for some of the things we need to do in terms of both housing and public commercial. So I'm looking forward to this discussion. And I know it's going to be long and arduous, but it's something that I'm excited about.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. To our second round of public comments, anybody sign up? Okay. Report to city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, a couple items this evening. First two regarding our roundabout of one thirty-third. Staff led by Asha and her team are working diligently to get you a contract for approval, hopefully at your next meeting on June seventeen. Initial review of those appear that we were able to secure some pretty favorable bids on those, and look like we'll probably be under budget on that, hopefully, hopefully. We'll bring that to you, though, on June seventeen for a contract award. Related, roundabout art, I know, and I know some of you have been following, the last step was going to Public Spaces Commission, I'll say a week ago, maybe even two weeks ago, to get some initial input on the first round artists that submit, that respond to our solicitation for proposals or qualifications. The next and current step is, we've asked the three, three of the five artists to go ahead and prepare some concepts, and then come back to Public Spaces and ultimately council at your July eighth meeting. Just in time, hopefully, if those look acceptable, we'll go out and start public engagement on those concepts, on either two or three of those concepts, the next day, July ninth, when the concert, the Wednesday concert for Southern Woodinville starts. So I think some exciting pieces coming up with that project, getting closer to what will be a very exciting project. And then finally, somewhat related, we have our community conversations. Our next one is June fourteenth at the farmer's market, diving into CIP and pollinator activities that the city's working on. So just public information on that piece. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you. Reports, councilmembers. Councilmember Evans.
Great, thank you. So the first thing I have is we received, or I received, an email from the Kirkland Mayor, Kelly Curtis, regarding our affordable housing. And she said, I just received the wonderful news from a single mom friend that drives every day from Granite Falls to her job in Kirkland. After many months of being waitlisted, she let me know that she just received word that she qualified for an arch apartment at East Rail Flats at fifty percent AMI. To say this is life-changing for her is to put it too lightly. Imagine having three extra hours a day to spend with your young son. She is beyond thrilled. Thank you for your work to build life-changing, life-improving, affordable housing in your city. And I just want to say for those on council who voted for this development agreement, we're part of this amazing story twenty-six times over because there are twenty-six affordable units over there, which is twelve percent of their units at fifty percent AMI, which is the area median income. That means that a one-bedroom was starting at one thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars a month, and anyone who's tried to find an apartment in this area knows that's a really, really great price. Secondly, Councilmember Arnt Randolph, Deputy Mayor Randolph and myself had a really great time at Twenty-One Acres last Saturday, representing the city at the Pollinator Fest. I want to thank staff for getting everything together so that we had a really great package, especially the tent when it started raining. It was really, really great to see. There were people as far away as B.C., all the way down to Portland, and I swear, just about every city in between. We had people coming from all over the place who were so excited that we were putting this on. And they have been following it year after year as it's been growing. So a great event, great job of the pollinator pathways northwest. Even in the rain, they still had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people come through. Third, I'd like to say it's been really busy with the Chamber of Commerce lately. There's ribbon cuttings, like tons, every single month. I've got two more ribbon cuttings this week, and it's just great to see so many new businesses choosing Woodinville to grow their business. And then finally, next Friday, we have East Rail Regional Advisory Committee Leadership Assembly, that is a mouthful. We have a planning offside on Friday, and we're workshopping the future of East Rail, which is a really exciting topic to dive into. I know I've heard from many members of our community about things they'd like to see and ideas that they have for East Rail. And our, our chamber executive, Kimberly Ellartson, will also be there, so we're going to have a really strong Woodinville presence. So stay tuned for more on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
No report, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Nothing this evening, thanks.
Councilmember Best Kemble.
A couple things. We've had a couple of meetings where we've had executive sessions added, but they're not on the online agenda for people. So I was wondering if we could just add that, so we don't have to remember to amend the agenda, and also so the public knows that we're having these meetings. I know that our, our schedule comes out and things change, but I think it would just be appropriate, at least for the online version, to add that change. At the most recent planning commission meeting, there was no liaison present, and I had a conversation with the vice chair. And normally, when the liaison is not available, that's why we have a secondary liaison. And if both the liaison and secondary liaison are not available, I still think that one member of council should be asked to go. I know there was a little bit of confusion at the meeting, and it's just a sign of respect. They're, they're doing a lot of work for us. So in the future, if neither the liaison or the co-liaison can make the meeting, let's see if we can find someone else. And there was a bear in the woods over by Leota Elementary today. They are herbivores, so they do eat berries, but I still would not recommend running at them. So just be careful walking through the woods because there apparently is a big brown bear walking the trail. Thank you.
Councilmember Arnt.
Thank you. I would like to second the joy I had at Pollinator Fest despite the wet conditions. And also, the chamber has had a lot of ribbon cuttings, and one of the ones that I got to attend last week wasn't for a new business, but for a business that had been displaced in our city from development, but was able to find a new location within our city. This is Tara Jennings Art Studio, now known as Muse. And it was really great to be able to welcome that business back into operation within the city of Woodinville. I think it's really a great indication that businesses want to be part of this community and that we, as a council, should be working harder to make sure that we have those affordable commercial spaces, so that businesses, when they're forced to move, have options to go in the city. And then I just wanted to provide a brief update on the creative district and that process. The folks over at the creative district are, have submitted a letter of intent to apply and are working on the application for official recognition, which is due in mid-June. And that is likely to go to a decision at the August board meeting for Arts Law. And they asked me to highlight one fact that is changed from when they did the joint presentation to the planning- presentation to the planning and public spaces and council in October, is that the boundaries for the creative district, district have shifted slightly on their official application from what they presented to us, and that was after discussions with local businesses and the consultants and a lot of outreach, just to include, uh, an area that had been questionable before, but, um, really supports affordable creative spaces right now. So you can take a look at their new boundaries on the website.
Councilmember Taylor.
Nope, nothing. Uh, couple things, um, so yeah, I went, I went to the, um, Pollinator Fest as well. I, I wasn't in the booth, but I got the opportunity to take part in the judging and presentation of awards for our youth in the area, in the North Shore area, and there was different categories based on age, and they, there, the prompt was to do, uh, some art based on pollinator, uh, pathways, what, what that means to the environment, and, uh, there's a lot of talented kids out there. I mean, it, it's really, it's really amazing, and I, I, I don't have a creative bone in my body, but there are some kids out there that can really do amazing work, so that was, that was actually a lot of fun. Um, uh, I was intending to go to Shoreline. Shoreline has a Miawaki Forest. I don't know if everybody knows what that is, but it's a small urban forest, uh, can be one to five acres or even larger, I guess. I don't know exactly, I, I asked somebody who lives over there how big it is, and he said, "I don't know, it could be one to five acres." I'm like, "I don't, I don't know." So I, I intended to go over there and check it out, because it's kind of a new trend in, uh, urban development. Uh, I, it was raining like crazy when the time was over in Shoreline, so I, I did not want, I did not, uh, go, but, uh, I intend to at some point, and I would encourage staff to reach out to find out, uh, how that works and how they accomplish that. I think it's on public land, um, but I'm not sure. Um, the, uh, also, I got, I did get the email from Mayor Curtis. It was, it was, uh, very heartening, um, to get that email. That's exactly, uh, the, that accomplishment really was exactly why we have taken on for the very first time affordable housing in Woodville. They, there's twenty-six units at East Rail. I took a tour over there, and, and that project is actually, it's, it's phenomenal. It's beautiful. They had, they have, uh, amenities in there that, um, that really don't exist in other places. They have, uh, one of those Top Golf things where you hit balls into the screen. They have a community garden, a community herb garden. They have a really cool gym. They have, uh, childcare on site, um, at there. Um, they have, uh, really nice wide sidewalks. Uh, the road, of course, is, is really key to what we're doing, um, and they were building the townhomes for sale behind there. So, um, for those of you who voted for that, um, thank you. That was really, meant a lot to our community and is, is really good to see. And having somebody, uh, save hours of commute a day so they could spend it with their, their child is, is, is exactly why we do this and concentrate it downtown where it's, it's, uh, makes, makes sense. Um, I, uh, I had the opportunity, uh, week and a half ago, I think, uh, to meet with Congresswoman Del Benet. There, she came to Pizzaology, which used to be Zeke's, um, and, and gave a nice, uh, talk, uh, on basically a myriad of subjects having to do with the federal government and state government and interactions with local government. So, uh, it was very, uh, it was very informational and, uh, it was important that we, Congresswoman Del Benet has done a fantastic job supporting Woodville and different projects we have in Woodville, and, and having that relationship has really paid off, uh, for us, and, uh, so I wanted to send a shout-out to the chamber who sponsored that, as well as Congresswoman Del Benet for coming and taking her time. So, um, that's all I had. That, um, that leads us to our executive session. I read the appropriate verbiage. Council adjourned to a closed session for approximately thirty minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. When public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency, RCW forty-two point three point one one zero, no formal action is expected to be taken. Um, let's meet at, uh, eight twenty, or eight thirty-five.
Meetings back in session. Executive session completed. No formal action taken. Looking for a motion to adjourn?